Good morning, everyone. Today is Thursday, April 7th, 2022, and we're here for a work session. As always, we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. And Jeff, why don't you lead us today in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Jefferson. It was nice for a change, right? Okay, we have no announcements, so we're going to get right into our first discussion item, which of course involves Jeff and also folks from AKRF. We have Bob White here. Uh-oh, no?
Ray DeBias.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought that was Bob there. Hi, Ray.
They do look alike. We do look alike. Like, as we get older, we tend to.
And of course, we're going to chat today about matters surrounding the update on the comp plan.
Correct.
So Jeff, you want to take it away?
Absolutely. Good morning, everybody. Good morning, Matt. So last month, we had Bob White come to a work session and update the board on where we are with the comprehensive plan update, provide a brief summary on the committee input from all the efforts we did last year. On March 28th of this year, we had the Central Advisory Committee, and you're going to see some of what they saw today in a much more succinct manner. We gave them an update on the summary of all the surveys and community meetings from last year, and we also provided them with this calendar on where we're going with the comp plan and our next steps. And our next steps include the upcoming topic and community meetings, and I just want to go through those with everybody today on beginning next week on April 12th, and these are going to be at the Riley Avenue Elementary School. The first meeting is going to focus on the environment, sustainability, and renewable energy. On April 14th, we're going to focus on economic development, our downtown on Route 58. On April 25th, we're going to focus on housing and community services. April 26th is going to be on transportation utilities and infrastructure. And last but not least, on April 27th, it's going to focus on agriculture, farmland, and historic preservation. So with us today is Ray DeBias. He is the president of L.K. McLean Associates. He and his associate, Vince Carrato, they're working on the transportation and infrastructure component to the comprehensive plan. We have early recommendations for you regarding Sound Avenue. And one thing I want to lay out for everybody so that it's perfectly clear, there's been some misinterpretation of the, maybe the headline of the press and what was heard on the radio. We are not recommending a center turn lane along the entire length of Sound Avenue.
Thank goodness.
It's only going to be in certain choke points. I want to get that out. Ray's going to talk about that in more detail during his presentation. But I had to field a couple of phone calls that came to the supervisor's office to lay the residents' concerns, and once they heard what our strategy is, they were fine with it. So I just want to get that out.
Jeff, quickly, I love the timeline. I think that's great. Is that posted for the public to see?
Yes.
Everything that you're going to see today is posted on the website. I'm glad you made that point, Frank.
Good.
The website for the comp plan update is still live and active, and we update it approximately every two weeks. So I asked the public, take a look at the website, look under what's new, and you'll see all the latest information that we're posting. It will include an updated date on it, so you know how quickly that we're updating it. That's where we're posting all of our public information. It's a shared document, so please, I asked the public to take a look at that. Our work we're going to talk about today is going to focus on Sound Avenue. For the board's memory, some of you were not here, back in 2019, in August, we actually had public hearings on a law that would prohibit on-street parking along the entire length of Sound Avenue. And the law was not met with public opposition. There were certainly questions, there were certainly amongst the farming community, but it was nothing to say, no, we don't want it. Also, since that time, I've met with several of the farming community, with the Lowens and the Harbs farm operations, to address their traffic issues, because those are two kind of highlighted farm operations on Sound Avenue. And it was very enlightening to hear their point of view as to the traffic issues. One of the issues, for example, with the Lowens on the western side of Sound Avenue was cars were parking head-in onto Sound Avenue and then parking and pulling out into oncoming traffic lane. He was able to pull the cars off the road and provide much safer circulation for the patrons of his farm operation, but also for cars on Sound Avenue. So that's one of the things I think is really important, is that we work with the farming community to address their particular traffic issues. And this can also be addressed through the special event applications. I think that's absolutely critical. Traffic circulation in and out of these properties during their peak harvest seasons when it's Christmas trees, or peaches, or apples, or pumpkins, we need to work with the farmer and the police and road improvements in some of these areas. We may need center turn lanes for these some of these. For example, if you have a choke point and cars wanting to make a left-hand turn into a site, it's going to back up Sound Avenue. So if we can facilitate that traffic, keep the traffic flowing, it will go a long way towards having cars try to find a bypass to residential neighborhoods. The other thing that Ray's going to talk about is Route 58, because if it's clogged up, people are going to look for a bypass to get to points east and west. So we're going to talk a little bit about that and try to alleviate some of the traffic congestion on Route 58 as well. So that's just a brief summary of what you're going to hear today.
Jeff, just to interrupt you to go back, you mentioned that there was previously a public hearing that touched on this subject.
Yes.
But it was never adopted, just to be clear for the public, right?
That is correct.
It went to a public hearing, and then it just died on the line. It was never adopted.
That is correct.
By the prior administration. Okay.
And we do actually have a law on the book, and under Chapter 289 of our town code, we do by law have certain areas on Sound Avenue that prohibit on-street parking, and it's all by Osborne Avenue, east and west of it, because that's an area where you have wide sweeping turns, and line of sight trying to enter onto Sound Avenue is very dangerous. So we prohibit on-street parking at that location. So we do have the precedent for prohibiting on-street parking. It's just that the hearings going forward, we're going to be looking to expand it along the entire length of the roadway. So that's just a brief summary. I'd like to turn it over to Ray DeBias. He has a PowerPoint he's going to share with you. This is on our website.
Morning, Ray.
Morning.
Morning.
Is this on? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. All right, thanks, Jeff. Yeah, we, the following presentation of the next slides is about 11 of them, and I'll try to go through them relatively quickly.
Ray, if I could just interrupt you, I'm sorry. I just needed to have pointed out, I should have done it earlier, Supervisor Aguirre is not with us in person today, but she is on the landline, and she's available for comment or dialogue if anybody needs her. Thank you.
All right. So I'm just going to go through the basic items that we talked about at the CAC meeting, which was just last week. Let's start with streets and highways. First of all, in terms of traffic capacity and congestion, we looked at some of the major roadways in the town, and these are both town roads, state and county, and we did like a planning, it's called a planning level of detail, traffic capacity calculations for those roads. In other words, to put it in a simple context, in between or along the roadway in general, are there the adequate number of lanes? We're talking about the whole entire roadway. The planning level says that yes, based on the traffic volumes we have on these major roadways in the town, the number of lanes are correct. This is not talking about intersections where you have both the traffic volume on the main road and the traffic volume on the side road fighting for the same space at an intersection. So intersections are going to be considered separately and will be looked at separately. I'll talk about that more in a bit. In terms of traffic safety, we have the crash records from DOT. There's a considerable amount of crash records. I think we went back five years. So we're looking for key points where there might be some crash history and some measures that need to be developed to mitigate crash occurrence. We also got, we're getting similar data from town police, so we're going to intertwine the two of them.
Ray, do we want to just coordinate the slide with all the...
Yes.
Sorry, I should have been next slide. Yeah. Okay, this is a lot easier to read when I'm talking about. In terms of agency updates, we looked at and talked to both the county and the state in terms of what they're planning in Riverhead, and this is a planning study, so it goes out 20 years. Typically, the program for the state is three or four years. They don't really have anything programmed beyond that. So we looked at what they have. A major improvement in Riverhead is realignment at the New York 25 or Middle Country Road and Edwards Avenue intersection. If you, I'm sure you're all familiar with it, because traffic backs up on 25 at that location. There's no left turn lanes, so what DOT is doing, they're putting left turn lanes on all four approaches to the intersection. They're going to realign Edwards Avenue so that instead of making that little jog as you cross 25, it's going to be a straight-through run, because right now, left-turning vehicles have to look around other left-turning vehicles to turn onto 25.
What I find the most dangerous in that intersection is when there is a left turn in front of them, they are going into the shoulder and proceeding straight when there are other people making left turns. It's very dangerous.
Yeah, it's dangerous. It's confusing. DOT recognized it. They put it on their program. It will be under construction, I believe, the end of next year, so it should be completed by 2024, which in the terms of this project, which goes out 20 years, is a short-term thing, so it's, and it's certainly needed. Jeff mentioned County Road 58. The county is looking at re-timing traffic signals along a bunch of their roadways. I don't know the exact roadways that are going to be considered, but County Road 58 is included in that, so they'll be looking at the coordination of the signals. So if you're on 58 and traffic is not that heavy, you should be able to go three or four signals without stopping if you're in the main flow of traffic at a particular time. So they're going to be looking at re-timing the signals in that area. So that'll take a while, because they're looking at multiple roadways, so to actually implement that, I think it's probably, you know, a year away before they actually look at all the roads, get approvals, and input the timing into the signal system. Other projects on the program that these agencies have identified are generally maintenance and repair-type projects, like repaving roadways, installing drainage. I believe there is a project on 25 to improve drainage west of Edwards Avenue. Other than that, there's no major programming. So this is a good time to, in this plan, to develop locations that are needed to be funded for future implementation by the agencies, in addition to town roadway improvements. We do know about flooded roadways, because we spoke with the previous highway superintendent who gave us a list of locations to look at that chronically flood in significant rainfall, so we'll be addressing those in the plan as well. Next slide, please. So we spoke about preliminary opportunities and draft recommendations at the CAC. We said we should develop a townwide access management policy. So along roadways, how do we give access to various uses or properties along those roadways? For example, if a location has multiple driveways, we really want to look at trying to combine those driveways into a single one or maybe two, so that there aren't all these points where there's traffic coming out onto the main roadway. We want to conduct a corridor study for Sound Avenue and also other identified scenic or historic roadways. Sound Avenue, I'm going to go into more detail. We have a few slides on Sound coming up. We want to encourage a shift, a mode shift in transportation, from people driving in single vehicle, single occupant cars to maybe bus transit, or car pools, or facilitating pedestrian bike travel throughout the town. We're going to look at safety and capacity improvements at critical intersections. Some of these are very obvious that we've seen or we've been told about. Maybe at the top of the list is 25 at County Road 105, which chronically backs up during many hours of a typical day. Sound Avenue at Edwards Avenue, that's the location where if you're traveling west and you want to go south on Edwards, you get a left turn arrow. Unfortunately, there's no left turn lane there, so if you're trying to make a left turn, you're waiting for traffic coming east to make that turn, you're backing up all the through traffic behind you. Wading River Road, Wading River Manorville Road at 25A, that's another location where turning lanes are needed. Peconic Avenue on Main Street in downtown, Main Street at Peconic Avenue and Roanoke Avenue, that's the main downtown intersection. Those, Peconic and Roanoke, as you know, are offset a bit, so if you want to go through the intersection to continue north or south, you've got to make a right turn and then make another left turn immediately. So that backs up the intersection. And we will, we'll have others that we'll add to the list as we go along, as we get more input from the public as well. Next, please. So I want to focus on Sound Avenue. It's a scenic and historic corridor, and just some background. We've heard about it probably in every Hamlet meeting that we had, some comments about Sound Avenue, traffic using Sound as a bypass, speeding on Sound Avenue during off-peak periods. So there's a strong desire to preserve that rural feeling of the roadway as you drive through, because it's actually a very scenic drive. It was declared, officially declared a historic and scenic corridor in 1975 by the state. The 2003 comprehensive plan recommended measures to preserve scenic corridors, a few have been adopted. So there's sufficient through capacity on Sound Avenue, but there's a lack of access control from the private properties along the roadway, causing some congestion and delays as well. Next, please. So what we did at the CAC is we came up with some projected improvements or things that should be done, both in the near term, so these would be very relatively quick actions in terms of a comprehensive plan. And then we have intermediate actions, which could maybe in year 10 or somewhere between the adoption of the plan and the 20-year threshold of the plan. And then we have the long-term things, which would have to get done, they're more major, they would have to get done in the tail end of the plan or the timeframe going forward from now. It's important, and even in these near-term recommendations, that we meet with the Traffic Safety Committee and coordinate potential improvements with them, get their comments and work with them. So just to summarize, we're looking at reviewing and modifying parking regulations, which, you know, we talked about at the CAC, prohibiting parking along the entire roadway and moving any parking that's related to one of the sites or any site along the roadway off the roadway and onto the site, which is really what legally should be done. Any parking attributed to a particular site should be off the roadway. We want to review and modify special event permit process to analyze access controls. So as you know, during the fall, there are many seasons, apple, Christmas tree, pumpkin, where there's parking along Sound Avenue. So you have vehicles parked on the shoulder of the road or on the grass, half on the pavement, half on the grass. You have people getting out of the cars, walking along the roadway while traffic is trying to get through the area. So we want to take a close look at that. We're looking at establishing appropriately sized off-street parking areas and traffic control during those special events. So what we said we should do first is a study of the corridor. So this will look into all of these elements in detail. So we'll be looking at things like sight distance at intersections and curves. So when I say sight distance at intersections, that's for traffic pulling out onto Sound Avenue as the motorist looks left or right to try to pull out. There are some restrictions in terms of either vegetation or a curve in the road where you can't see adequately, or you're in a situation where you're pulling out and you have a vehicle exceeding the speed limit, which you didn't see when you started your maneuver, approaching very quickly. And also looking at lowering the speed limit, which is pretty much consistently 45 miles an hour through the entire length of Sound Avenue in the town. We're talking about left turn lane installation at intersections. I mentioned Edwards Avenue, and we'll be doing a layout in that study of roadway improvements that need to be done, including parking restrictions. Next, please. So for the intermediate and long term, the intermediate term, we would begin phased implementation of the corridor-wide improvements. So from the corridor study, you'd identify some intermediate-term improvements, list them, and try to get funding for them. I should say that anything in the comp plan that's adopted is very useful in facilitating getting private funding, grants, any projects that, say, even agencies like the State Department of Transportation, which does have funding for local road improvements, any type of grant programs that the state has, or any type of grant that any agency of the state has. You say, hey, this is in my comp plan, this is a priority, here's all the background documentation to support it. It really facilitates or gets you high up the list in terms of getting something implemented. In addition, we'll be looking at limited and location-specific capacity and safety improvements at intersections, as I mentioned. So that could be adding shoulders, turning lanes, improving traffic control, and redesigning intersections. In the long-term period, it would be the build-out or the implementation of the other improvements that come out of that corridor plan, and that would take into account future traffic growth, any known future developments of properties along a particular roadway, the Sound Avenue, for example, aggrainment facilities. And we'll also be looking at adjacent towns, and not only for Sound Avenue, we'll be looking to get input from adjacent towns, but also for any transportation recommendations that we develop. So we'll be looking, we'll be soliciting input from Town of Southold, Town of Southampton, and the Town of Brookhaven, which we've actually already begun doing that. I requested some information on what they have planned in the future. Next, please. So the preliminary and potential long-term strategy, again, to meet with the Traffic Safety Committee to coordinate the improvements, along Sound Avenue would be to widen the pavement within the existing right-of-way width. So there's a 66-foot wide right-of-way along Sound Avenue, very consistent, which a typical roadway would have, might have a 50-foot right-of-way, so it's a wide right-of-way. Being that it's a scenic and historic corridor, we don't want to pave that whole area or add through travel lanes in that area. So there would be just a retention of a one lane in each direction. A two-way left turn lane at appropriate locations, so two-way left turn lane at driveways, major driveways, and we'll be looking at those in that corridor study. Where should they be? Locations where there is significant traffic entering the roadway from a driveway or going onto the driveway from Sound Avenue. It would be a five-foot wide bike lane in each direction, and the location and design of curb cuts for the driveway access would be included to improve traffic flow and improve safety. And prohibition of parking, I talked about. And we'll also be investigating sight distance at intersections and curves and lowering the speed limit. So next slide has a pretty good graphic depiction of what I just talked about. It's a little tough to see, probably across the room, but what you've got is a lane of traffic in each direction, a through lane. In the center there, at appropriate locations, you have a two-way left turn lane, so there would be widening of that roadway for that extra lane at appropriate locations. And then you have the bike lanes on the outside as well. On the edge of the roadway, you would have a mountable curb that could be driven over only in areas where you need it for drainage. So when you need, you have a flooding, a flooded area or an area that floods relatively consistently, you'd like to install drainage there. In order to get the water to the drainage inlet in the roadway, you'd need to put a little bit of a mountable curb that can be driven over on either side of that drainage basin. So the roadway is 43 foot wide. That's depicted on this slide. So it's 43 feet of pavement and a 66-foot right-of-way. So you have at least, you know, 10 or 12, 10 or 11 feet on either side of the roadway that's retained either in its natural state or retains the driveways or other parking areas on private properties along the roadway. Next, please. Just want to give an update of, or a little bit of what public transportation agencies are planning. Suffolk County Transit, coincidentally, is developing a reimagining transit study, which is looking at bus service in the entire county and making major suggestions in terms of elimination of some county bus routes. And also, on the other side of the coin, increasing service on some of the more popular or more highly-used routes. So they had public hearings after the CAC meeting in the middle of last week. So these are some of the, some of the general results from the plan that they're developing. And this plan's available for public comment, so I'm sure, based on the public meeting that I viewed, there were a lot of public comments about route elimination and other items. So in general, county-wide suggestion, suggestions are that the number of routes was significantly reduced, so there's a lot of elimination of county bus service. And on the other side of the coin, again, there's an increase in service to 30 minutes on the more highly-used routes instead of 60 minutes. So you'd be able to catch a bus waiting a lot less time, and that's seven days a week until 10 o'clock at night. So the county's goal here is to provide access to jobs. So they say that there will be almost a 50% increase in access to jobs of where people want to use the bus from their home or wherever they normally board to get to work. So that was the primary focus of that, of this, actually, it's the primary focus of the study. One of the routes being eliminated, proposed to be eliminated, is the S-62 route, which runs to Riverhead from Wading River, I believe. Actually, it's west of that. It's actually through Mount Sinai and those areas, all the way out to downtown Riverhead. So there were a few calls or a few comments on the public meeting that that was not a good thing. A lot of people apparently used that bus either to get to work or to use other facilities along the bus route. Specifically in Riverhead, there's a new timed transfer point at the county center, so the bus arrivals would be timed better so that if you wanted to transfer from one bus to the other, you wouldn't have to wait a long period of time. There's a general updating of schedules, modification of the S-58 route. The headway bus, the headways or time between buses in Riverhead remain at 60 minutes, and the job access in terms of Riverhead improves slightly. As I mentioned, the county improvements is almost 50%, and Riverhead is just slightly. And in Riverhead, they're proposing to eliminate the 8A feeder route, which really covers a lot of different areas in Riverhead. So there are some needs to address that. Actually, that's probably not a good thing in terms of Riverhead viewpoint, but I'm going to talk a little bit more about that. Next, please. So the Long Island Railroad is not, there's nothing earth-shattering on this slide. In general, the ridership is recovering after the pandemic, and I use the post-pandemic term cautiously. There's going to be a relocation of the Yapp Hank train station, which is hidden off of County Road 21, just south of the Long Island Expressway, hardly used at all. It's really in the backyard of the Suffolk County Department of Public Works offices. So there's been a general discussion between the county and Brookhaven Town and the railroad, and one of the locations identified was to move it east on William Floyd Parkway at the LIE South Service Road. It's in the east end of an industrial area there, which is primarily just going to be accessed off of William Floyd Parkway. There was some thought that if they moved the station... There was some thought that if they moved the station further east, which was one of the proposals, that some roads in Riverhead would be used to get to the station, which might cause some traffic capacity problems on those roadways, but it looks like that's not going to happen. One additional train has been added to the Greenport Line with a stop in Riverhead. The railroad plans no additional service changes because they're really like a read-and-react type agency. So if they're reading that there's more potential riders in an area due to downtown development, say, they would then look at increasing train service to that location. I should mention, too, the railroad is looking at battery-operated trains that are rechargeable on all diesel routes. They're doing a study right now. These would be battery-operated trains that would be charged at the terminus of the route. They'd pull in and I guess they'd charge the batteries in the locomotives. So it's a good thing for air quality, anyway. Next, please. So preliminary recommendations in terms of public transportation or preliminary opportunities and recommendations. As you know, you have the downtown revitalization grant for $10 million, and there is some mention in there, funds for transit. So those could be used to support the railroad avenue transit-oriented development. There's a need for last-mile services. So that's like when you take the train, say, to get to work, you'd like to be able to go from the train to your job, so that there's a need for either a last-mile service or a circulatory bus that stops to meet the train so that you can get to work, and then again, a return home on the train. There's talk about, or we will be looking at, an additional downtown bus stop for Hampton Jitney as the area develops. And we'll be looking at bus turnout lanes on County Road 58. What that is, is actually taking the bus stop and moving it physically out of the right lane on County Road 58. So if you're driving down 58 and the bus stops in front of you to pick up passengers, you have to stop. And if there's traffic in the left lane next to you, you can't get into the left lane, traffic backs up. So these are little cutouts where the bus actually drives off into a side lane where the bus shelter is, people get on, and traffic continues in that right lane without interruption. And we're also going to be looking at, in detail, more detail, Main Road east of Riverhead for public transportation improvements. Next, please. In terms of bikes and pedestrians, these are some of the things that we pointed out we'll be looking into. Again, in this category, we'll be meeting with the Alternative Transportation Committee to discuss and talk about recommendations before they are developed. First bullet there talks about a potential connection to the Empire State Trail Extension via bike routes, bike lanes, or shared-use path. There's three different bike options. One is a bike route, where you just post a sign on the roadway that says this is a bike route. Bike lane actually has a physically marked-out lane where the bikes can ride in each direction. And a shared-use path is a 10-foot-wide path for bikes and pedestrians that's off the roadway. So there's a potential to connect to the Empire State Trail Extension. The Empire State Trail initially was designated from Buffalo to Manhattan. So theoretically, you could jump on a bike in Manhattan and bike all the way to Buffalo if you follow the signs, when that's implemented. There was a thought later to add a Long Island spur so that you could travel all the way across Long Island. The Empire State Trail is a combination of off-roadway, bike routes, and bike lanes. So it's a mixture. There's some actual travel on existing roadways, and there's some off the roadway. In terms of Riverhead, the trail comes in from Southampton at Center Drive, crosses the river, goes east on Main Street to Roanoke Avenue, turns left, goes up Roanoke all the way to Sound Avenue, and then turns right onto Sound and heads into Southhold. So there's a portion of Sound Avenue that's already designated as an Empire State Trail Extension, which would work well with a bike lane on the left and right side of Sound Avenue, as we talked about already. The other project that's completed and it's open, I don't know if it's officially open, is the Rails-to-Trails Project that Suffolk County developed. So this is an extension from Port Jefferson Station to Wading River. And it's constructed under the PSENG power lines on Lipa property. It follows that all the way from Port Jeff Station to Wading River. There's a little piece of it that's on Route 25A for about a mile in Port Jeff Station. And then west of there, it connects to the New York State, to Port Jeff Station, off-road pedestrian and bike path. So you could theoretically go, and this is now complete, so you could theoretically take your bike from East Citytucket all the way to Wading River. And most of it's off the road, except for that, I think it's about a one-mile piece that's on Route 25A. So there's the potential to connect, to extend that trail from Wading River, partially running under the existing power lines, and then eventually connecting to Sound Avenue, to the bike lanes on Sound Avenue. So that would be a bike connection from Sound Avenue all the way to the west to East Citytucket. We're also going to be talking about bike and pedestrian enhancements through the site plan process. So when a property or a site plan application comes in for development of a private property, we'll be looking to recommend sidewalk improvements along the frontage of that property. So eventually, on a roadway, if you have these pieces of sidewalk, as the roadway developed, eventually, you could have a continuous sidewalk along the roadway, which would facilitate pedestrian travel. Bike racks on commercial properties would be good. We'd be looking to require bike accommodations at the Long Island Railroad Station, the downtown and Hamblin Center locations, and also at town facilities like the Senior Center and Community Center. And those could be bike racks. At the Long Island Railroad Station, they've accommodated bike lockers where people want to bike to the train, lock up their bike, take the train, come back, and pick up their bike and bike home. So that's been done before, too. And then major employers should really provide bike racks for people who would like to bike to work on good weather days. And then we'll be looking at implementation of dedicated bike lanes on some of the existing town roads where there is some bike travel, but the bikes are within the roadway pavement and really competing with cars. Next, please. So I already mentioned this, but this is the final slide. We'll be coordinating transportation recommendations, particularly starting in the near term with the Town of Southhold. We've already made contact with the North Fork Transportation and Traffic Task Force, which is, that task force is participated in by Suffolk County Department of Economic Development and Planning. So it's a good group to talk about what Southhold is looking to do and coordinate transportation recommendations with Southhold. And as I mentioned, we already reached out to the Town of Brookhaven and the Town of Southampton to start the process of talking about what they're planning to do and to try to coordinate that with Riverhead improvements. So that's the final slide. If you have questions, I'd be happy to take them.
I think we have Supervisor Aguirre, I think she has a couple of questions. Supervisor, are you with us? Supervisor, did you have any questions for Ray and Jeff?
Yeah, I'll let him finish his slide.
He's all finished.
Oh, okay, great. I'm on a delay. Yes, good morning. Thank you for mentioning the transportation task force. It is a viable task force. Finally, somebody had the foresight to put everyone together on the same page. And I hope that you keep up with that because that's very critical here. And I just have one other quick question. When is the projected time of completion for this project?
For which one, which part?
You referring to the entire comp plan, Supervisor?
Yes, yes.
We're looking at wrapping things up in the spring of next year.
Okay. All right, thank you so much.
So I have a question for you. I know we had this conversation, I think it was last week, right? So have you looked at what does work? And I'll give you an example. When we did set up cones at choke points, it worked very successfully, right? I don't want to wait till next spring of 2023, and I think Jefferson, he probably would agree, we need to work with Southhold now because if they do what we're doing, that works. Okay, that's number one. Number two is, you talked about, I'd like to get on the crash record, I don't see any, I'd like to get that data, but the other thing I'd ask you to add, and we talked about this last week, was the amount of deer hits. Now, the police have X record of that. I would ask that you check with all the local auto body places, because how many they have. Because a lot of these hits are not even reported to the police. All right. You mentioned special event, you know, looking at Special Event Code 255, and I'll say this, that the operations, you know, and the agricultural operations, you know, I don't look at what they're doing as events. Pumpkin seed, they don't file a 255 to grow pumpkins and sell them. And I think we need to make a, draw a clear line there. Yes, there are a couple of events that happen that do require a 255, and the police have done a great job with traffic control on that.
For example, the Garlic Festival.
The Garlic Festival is a really good example. The other thing I'd like to mention is you talk about, you know, exits and entrances. I would ask you to check in with Halleckville, they're doing a phenomenal job. And the reason why it's good to have more than one curb cut is because you can then, even if it's the end of the day, you're a farm or you've had an event, they do a great job in saying, they have big signs, if you're going east, go out this way, okay? If you're going west, go out this way. And they do a phenomenal job that way. So I would like to, you know, and I'd help you with anything I've seen where things do work, and we don't have to reinvent the wheel.
Yeah, I could just interrupt you for a sec. That was checked with on the last item, with the double driveways and you were talking about, it was Halleck?
Halleckville, yeah, museum, yes. Yes. And it's more, you know, because they're quite a bit apart from each other. I think they have one, two, they have at least two, they have actually three, but two that they use really well. As far as the speed limit, I'm a little bit concerned because off-season, 45 seems to work really well. During the season, the speed limit finds its own limit, which is usually about five miles an hour. So to try to reduce that, you know, off-season makes little sense. I mean, I would like to know how it makes sense. I should make that call.
Yeah, just one comment on that. I mean, I've used it in off-season as well, and I see people driving well in excess of 45. Again, it's the, as someone already pointed out, it's the, you're driving down the road, you feel like you can drive, I can see pretty good, so I'm just going to drive as fast as I can because if anybody pulls out, I see them. I got plenty of visibility.
Gives us the opportunity to get tickets. I mean, look at the expressway. Who goes 55 miles an hour? I mean, you know.
I think the most, the most contributing factor to the speed on Sound Avenue is that Sound Avenue ends the ferry. The ferry leaves every hour on the hour. And so speed often on Sound Avenue is addressed on how close you are to the ferry or how much traffic that you've been held up for, so that you make that eight o'clock ferry, that nine o'clock ferry, and so forth.
More so an orient, when you're behind that farm truck that's going 12 miles an hour, and you're sweating bullets because you're within 10 minutes of making your move.
And so I think people are constantly watching the clock, and it's, you know, of just how much time I need to get there and how much time I got before that ferry pulls away. And it plays a role on it, definitely. And I've seen, and my only concern about reducing the speed on it is the fact that I live in Wading River, I'm constantly on Sound Avenue coming to Riverhead, and I use that way because I attempt to avoid, like this time here, the traffic that goes with Route 58. And so Sound Avenue is a much easier corridor this time here to travel around. I think reducing the speed limit, I see people do really dumb things, you know, if I'm driving a speed limit or another car's in front of me, they make these sudden moves to pass cars. And it's just, it is a constant winding road, and I've seen many near-head-on collisions because they simply don't want to do 30, 30's not acceptable, and they've got someplace to be. I think reducing it, you put on the potential for those people making those maneuvers.
That's a good point. And I'll point out that on Sound Avenue, I'll give you an example. I was going to Wading River last night. Somebody was doing 30 miles an hour on my way to Wading River, all the way from Northville Turnpike.
Close me.
No. I thought of you. Yeah. But the stream of cars, the traffic, and this is off-peak, okay? That's one. Two is, what's that, on 58 here? The 55 miles an hour, when it turns to 55 between Jamesport and Laurel? You get so many people from out of town that, and they're driving that road at 35 miles an hour. I wish there was like 100 signs that said 55 because, you know, you've got to look at how, what the tourists do. But with that, I would also recommend, in terms of the idea of buses and that whole idea of, you know, like you're going to bus people to farms, you know, that's that idea. There was an organization, and I'll get it to you, I think it was the North Fork something or other, they got a $150,000 grant maybe five years ago to try and do that. It was a failure.
It was the East End Tourism Alliance, I believe they got that.
It was the East End Tourism Alliance? It was, and I would urge you to speak with the Jitney, who's a major bus operator who absolutely has explored this. And I don't know about you, I know about me when I travel. I'm not getting, you know, when I travel to other locations, I really don't want to be on a bus to determine where I'm going to go. But I would, you know, urge you to look, talk with the Jitney. Thank you.
Well, it's difficult also, Bob, when a lot of these are going out to the farm stands and to the festivals, you're not going to go out and make all you can carry pumpkins onto a bus.
Exactly.
You know, it's difficult, and that's an exaggeration, but even just buying small stuff at a farm stand, it's not conducive to getting back onto a bus and carrying it. So I think that part of it, people are, want to be in control of their destination and when they can go and when they can leave. So driving their own car is their preference.
One of the things that Bob mentioned just quickly was signage, and I think that's going to be really critical going forward, especially along the Sound Avenue corridor. I really like two things. I like the dedicated bike lanes. As it stands right now, bicycles on Sound Avenue is a bloody nightmare. We have some signage that says, "Single file, please," but I think with the widening and the dedicated five-foot bike section or bike path, I think that would really help with competing with cars and bikes. The other thing that I really liked, I thought was really thinking outside the box, was along 58 where the buses can turn into that little jib, that little cutout. I think that's really going to help going forward. I think that's a great idea. That works great in front of TJ Maxx where that cutout is, and they pull off there where the shelters are.
The obstacle to that is not the town requiring it through the planning board cycle review process, it's with the county agencies agreeing with one another. The county bus service and GPW are two different agencies. One agency wants one thing, another agency wants another, and...
There lies the problem.
There lies the problem.
Tyranny at its best.
We'll help as much as we can with that because that is, that's a no-brainer. I don't know how it affects, like, the people that, whoever owns the TJ Maxx property, you know.
It really doesn't because it's part of the county right-of-way.
So, oh, okay.
See, it's one of the things I'd want to know, what considerations putting into it? I have concerns about doing any type of widening or anything of Sound Avenue. And I'll tell you the reason why. I typically think that if you widen it, you make turning lanes, you make biking lanes and so forth. I believe that it becomes more utilized. And so I'll take, for example, Jeff, you're familiar with Southampton County Road 39? It's a two-lane highway that widened it to four lanes. It was good for about three to six months, and now it is even worse than it was before they widened it because it just...
they widened it because it just, everyone thought, wow, we can utilize, they widen the road, let's all go. And it just, it's worse than it ever has been after, you know, adding two more lanes of traffic with turning lanes and everything. So I just, sometimes I think that, you know, when, you know, I went back to you mentioning the ferry before, I think that many people pick the Port Jefferson ferry because they know there's potential traffic backups and so forth in the summer and going there. I think, oh, well, it's widened now, so we won't use Port Jeff, we'll use Cross Sound. And I just, sometimes I think when you widen it, how do you decide that if you make these maneuvers and all this financial investment is, and you do these turning lanes, you lock it up, that you're just not opening it up to invite more future traffic? Because that's exactly what happened in the town of Southampton, and it is beyond the disaster now there.
Ray, Ken's making a really good point because I remember attending one of the transportation meetings years ago, and the study concluded that if you add double the lane capacity, adding, going from one lane to two lanes, or two lanes to four lanes on a highway within a five-year period, that additional capacity will be absorbed and will.
If you build it, then they will come.
Yeah. There's.
And so now we've expanded, you know, just hypothetically, we expanded Sound Avenue, we did these turning lanes, we invested in it, and it's, and in five years, we're right back where we were, maybe worse. And then now we've lost the rural character. I don't want to do that.
And I think one point that we need to really emphasize is it's not going to be one fixed solution. We need to look at Route 58, we need to take a look at the other roads that people are heading in that direction so that people have an alternative means to get to where they want to go. Because if you load it up, as you said, just fixing Sound Avenue and not Route 58, Sound Avenue is now going to be, the traffic issue is going to be worse. So we've got to look at Route 58 equally as much as Sound Avenue.
I'm afraid of contractors that are working in Southampton that have got to get to 105 will use that corridor now from Mill place and everything else coming through and picking it up in Wading River and going all the way down that way. And it just, it'll just be a secondary main route. I don't think I want that.
And the fact that our housing starts and the seasonal housing becoming year-round housing has really exacerbated the problem. The seasonal traffic is no longer seasonal, it's becoming year-round.
Yeah, you make good points about attracting traffic to a roadway after it's improved. More the case where you're adding a lane, but even if you're just adding turning lanes, you probably have some transfer of traffic from parallel roads, in this case 25, 58, onto an improved Sound Avenue. I think, you know, it's dramatic when it's doubling the number of lanes. It's less, it's more subtle when you're adding turning lanes to get traffic off that through lane and keep the through lane flowing. So, yeah, that is a consideration that will be looked at.
Last question I have is that in this hypothetical, you know, map that you have of Sound Avenue, you know, with the turning lanes and the bike lanes, who picks up the tab on that? Who's going to pay for that expansion?
Well, that's one of the, the plan will look at funding options. Now, as I mentioned, if it's in the plan, it facilitates you getting funding from other agencies to make those improvements. But, you know, there's usually a town share, but this is something we'll explore and put in the plan before we finalize it.
I think if you're proposing things such as bicycle improvements, that obviously involves drainage improvements. I think there are probably grant opportunities, especially at the federal state level through encourage that sort of thing. I'm a cyclist, so I see the areas in Sound Avenue that have a five-foot shoulder, it makes all the difference in the world versus having a three-foot shoulder, just an additional two feet. Gives you a safer environment from the cars.
And most of it right now, the telephone poles are right on the white line. And there are, there is no shoulder for the majority of the way. And then the other problem that you still want to alleviate with, that's why I'm not a proponent of bike lanes on Sound Avenue, is because of the rural character. You have tractors still crossing the road, pulling in and out, and you have large amounts of gravel, debris, dirt that continuously come out on that road, which I think is very dangerous for bike. So it just changes that constant, you know.
And that's Ken Rothell, all bicyclists who.
I think it's absolutely wonderful. I just think that the way that it is now, it's not safe because we've ridden it. I'm a motorcycle enthusiast. I take my Harley out all the time and I go out that way, and I just cringe when you come to the certain areas. But I love the rural character and I love the farming in it, but it just, for a bicycle or a motorcycle, sometimes there's a hazard there that we have to be cautious about.
He's just trying to get headlines.
So the only, I mean, the positive thing about a bike is a positive. You can get bikes. I won't bike on Sound Avenue. But one of the concerns that I have is when there is an emergency, you know, police emergency, and their ability to create, you know, basically three lanes, you know, which the highway department does now, right? They're working and they cone off, they can get three lanes. That, to me, is, you know, but right now, the condition of Sound Avenue on the shoulders is you can't bike there. It's dangerous as hell. And it's dangerous for motorists, you know, and bicycles, you know, anyway.
Yeah, there is no curb, so you get a lot of the adjacent landscaped turf, dirt area that has, over the years, has encroached into the paved portion. You have to get like a greeter out there and just push it back will give us additional shoulder width. And that should not be a heavy financial cost.
Well, what Frank mentioned earlier, with the signs for single file bike riding, they're just not adhered to. And, you know, that, and I kind of get it because if you're on a long trek, sometimes you want to ride alongside somebody to have a conversation or whatever. But on Sound Avenue, it is the worst place you could do that. And, you know, it is a violation of VNT law to ride to a side, but unfortunately, it's not always done that way, and it just makes it more dangerous.
I'm an avid cyclist, and when I see two people riding side by side, I always shout out single file. The result is usually a salute back to them.
Yes, understood, understood. There's a lot of great things in here, though. I think you guys really did your homework. You know, I think things moving forward are looking up.
And one thing that really, and Brian DeLucas was one that really brought it to fruition at the Central Advisory Committee about our involvement with the North Fork Transportation Task Force.
Yeah, that's huge. That's huge.
So kudos to him and Carol in the town coordinator's office. She gave me the contact information with the county. So we're now sharing all of our information with the county and the task force, so we're now going to be integrally involved with that. The next meeting on that is not until June 10th, but at least now we're sharing the information.
So with a quick recap, Sound Avenue is not being widened the entire length with a center lane. Please, don't think that's what's happening because it's not, it never was. We need maybe to address the areas within Sound Avenue that have those situations. And even in terms of no parking, the entire length of Sound Avenue, aesthetically, having no parking signs up that entire length is horrible. The other thought I had is, is we really could just narrow it down to specific areas like it's already been done in some areas where parking could be an issue. Because for the most part, people don't park alongside Sound Avenue, on Sound Avenue on the side. There's no reason to, there's nothing there unless you're stopping to take a quick picture of a fox running across the sod field or, you know, something like that. There is no parking there, it's not an issue. So I don't know if we need to ban the entire length or just go to specific lengths of it or lengths of it and address those areas.
Ray, one thing Tim has pointed out, it's an excellent question, because we've counted out in other areas where we've had the no parking area. We have signs that are required to be spaced every certain feet. It's a nice, to me, it's a nice word, seeing no parking, no parking, no parking. But I think there is an alternative, I think you told me about beginning at certain points, no parking from here to Exum. So I think there may be an alternative that we're looking at so we don't have that issue if we decide to go down that path.
Aesthetically, that would look horrible on a scenic route like that.
Yeah, it's permissible in the manual of uniform traffic control devices, which you need to follow when you put signs out. Instead of doing the 200-foot, signs every 200-foot, you're right, be a lot of signs. They're not very big, I mean, they're 12 by 18, but still, you drive down the road quickly, you feel like you're passing, you know, multiple signs close together. If you post a larger sign at the, when you enter, say, enter the town heading from Southhold, you post, it's a larger sign, but it says no parking, Sound Avenue, you know, it basically says that information, and it's the entire length within the town. You post that on the sign, that covers the entire length. Now, you'd probably want to put a couple of more signs at major turn-on points where someone gets off County Road 105 and they're like, well, I can park here, I didn't see any signs.
Yeah, because if you come on, say, from Harriks Lane and between Harriks and Manor, and there's no sign, and you turn to it from Harriks and go on to Sound, and you decide to park on the side of the road and you get a ticket, you're going to go into court and say, hey, it's not posted.
Right, exactly right. And it's similar to snow emergency routes that you'll see when you enter a town, sometimes they'll post entire length of this roadway as a snow emergency, no parking during snow emergencies, similar to that.
So I think we, you've heard some very first recommendations coming as a result of what we've heard back from the community. I know we're going to go forward, look at the issue with Sound Avenue at a future work session. The community meetings are starting up next week, so please, everybody, come to those. We really need your input. And again, we're just going to start coming back with more recommendations to you probably beginning in June. So things are starting to pick up really fast in the next few months.
And Jeff, you're going to bring all this to, and I guess Ken, an upcoming traffic safety meeting, right?
Yes.
Chief can weigh in on all this as well?
Yep, sure.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Thank you, Ray. Appreciate you being here.
Thank you.
So that's it for open discussion items. The only thing left, of course, is to go into executive session where we'll discuss matters surrounding the hiring of a deputy town attorney with the town attorney Eric Howard. So can I have a first and a second to go into exec?
Sure. Second.
Thank you. Everybody be safe.